I work for a person who takes care of the radio. You've got to break this gap. You've got to do it with the call. Why not? So you have to do it. That's where you can download. That's where you can download. Which is very good, because obviously, because they call me. But that's why I was, I was so much. I mean, we're part of the, you know, city. Which they have, you know. The business can be, or if they have, they. But again, I can, I can, it's, it's.
It's like, yeah.
So, what was the definition? So how, so how does, how do you define the service? I would say, you. That one, that one. Then the one, there's so many, I'm so confused, like anything else. Just kind of collapse. Those, from all of them, which you get down the steps. So you're, but the Lord's Lord, the law, the law. But the other thing, it doesn't take the, actually, cities, teams, and this. I'll give you an example. This is your, the simple car, or, night, hour, all the time, you're, 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 you're. You're not gonna get that if you're just kind of. Right, right. Not more than, you're gonna miss, but I know this is, like, you're, you're. Yeah, there is, so, yeah. I'm still, I'm still kind of funny. I'm trying to make this like here. Yeah, maybe. You know. There's lots of, uh, things. Much, they can test it. And they're like, I'm actually stacking up meetings, they're stacking, they're meeting, they're. And they come back, okay, we're back in three hours. Board meeting for a protest, and, okay, they don't say. See, that's, you know, they're not supposed to. Right, but did they do? They, um, this, this, you know. Do you, that's, maybe. There's no rush, there's no rush. No, there's no rush, so, you're good. All right, come here. That one, is, is, is. All right, shake it, insert it. Yeah, I, I don't. Oh, yeah, we have, we have, chatting, speaking, about.
We convene back room executive session at time now is eighteen thirty-six. Consulted with attorneys for the city of Uvalde. As you know, we're still doing the investigation. The investigation that we promised will be done by, for our police department has begun. All responding police officers that were there at Robb Elementary are going to get interviewed by Mr. Prado. He's going to be conducting the investigation and we're going to let the investigation go, see what he determines, but everybody that's Uvalde PD that was there will be held accountable for their actions. So that has started. As far as Mr. Lieutenant Mariano Fargas, as we know, we have put him on administrative leave. We, basically, that's the beginning of his disciplinary actions. By state law, that's the beginning. Now pending the investigation, if he comes back saying, hey, he needs to be terminated or reinstated, we will take appropriate action when that investigation is done. I know it gets hard, it gets frustrating because it moves real slow, but as you know, the school district jumped and they did, hey, we're going to fire, we're going to fire, we're going to fire Peter Arredondo. And guess what they did? They had to come back and follow the law. The law states there's due process. We don't want to do that, okay? We don't want to do it wrong. We want to do it right. So that's why we're going to take our time, follow the investigation, and every police officer will be held accountable for their actions on their response. And that's basically...
And this statute is, only applies to law enforcement officers. That's why I know a lot of people are saying, well, Peter Arredondo is contracted, that's why they're doing that. It's not because he's on a contract, it's because he's a law enforcement officer. Same thing with us. Fargas is a law enforcement officer and we have to follow those state statutes and that means we have to follow this process. And it's not about lawsuits, it's not about this or that. It's about, next year it could be one of your friends who's on the police department and we catch him sleeping in his car briefly and we fire him and you come back saying, you can't do that because there's a state statute that says you have to give him due process. Everybody has to be treated exactly the same. So that's why we're doing that. We have to do that.
We have to.
But this investigation is looking at every single officer and what his actions, what he did, what our policy says, and basically we'll get, we're going to get a report on everybody. This is what he did and this is what he didn't do. And we're going to, we'll act on it. And we will act on it, we promise that to you.
We owe it to the families. We want to get it right. We started this internal investigation, guess what? DPS is now doing their own internal investigations because we started. You guys, the families asked for it, we're doing it. Now, everybody should be doing it. We should be asking DPS, hey, do your own investigation. Border Patrol should be doing their own investigation. That's the way it's supposed to be done.
Yeah, we were also told that they weren't going to do their investigation until, until the main investigation was completed, that Dr. Dykes is taking with y'all?
No. No, ours started already.
Ours is where we're going to start?
Ours has already begun. That's why Mr. Fargas, Lieutenant Fargas, is on administrative leave. That's the first step that anybody that works as a police officer has to be done. He has to be put on administrative leave. The complaint, it's the complaint. Y'all turning your complaints to the school district is what I saw. That's the first step. We already did the first step, okay?
We did the first step internally. The city manager gives a complaint to Mr. Fargas.
So why isn't there a request that one administrative leave?
There's, we don't have enough evidence to say. We need the investigation. We got to do this. We got to do it the right way.
Let's move on, and that way we can get the, let's move on to item four, citizens' input. Do we have to listen? First off is Andy Gonzalez Jr.
Hi, good evening. So, in the last city council meeting on July twelve, right, in the new business nine B, Community Health Development, CHDI requested one acre tract to be given to them, right? I want to appeal that consideration or I want the city council to table that decision to donate to them, that tract, right? And because I think there's, before you guys voted on the motion, there was some information that you guys are not aware of. And that's one thing, I think, you know, like the city manager, he stated, right, that the land, the land was landlocked, right? That's not a true statement, right? On that one acre tract, I have property, right? And I have access to that property, right? So that was a false statement, right? And then, second of all, right, within the last two months, we've made inquiries to purchase that land, right? We have spoken with Susan Anderson once in person, okay? The other times we made phone calls, right? And none of that time was our calls or our questions answered, right? So I think that bit of information you guys are not aware, right? So to donate this land, right, this is taxpayers' property that's out there, right? And also, you know, there's people that are aware that we inquired of purchasing it, right? We purchased, we want to purchase that property, right? So, basically, right, what I'm requesting is that you put it up for vote, or to the people to bid on it, right? It might be landlocked or it might be only certain people have access to it, but the reality is I have access to it, right? And I want the opportunity as a taxpayer to be able to purchase that property. And then, you know, again, you know, this is something that, to me, it belongs to the city, I can get that, right? But the reality of it is taxpayer money, at some point, somebody's taxpayer money bought that property, right? So I think this land shouldn't be given away.
I'll address a little bit. We'll look into this, obviously, we'll discuss this. We can't make any decisions tonight. Number one, we didn't know anything about this. Number two, the people we donated it to, we fund through the taxpayer money. And our thoughts when we did this were probably we could reduce some of the funds that we have to give to this group for several years for the value of the donated land, and that's probably what we're going to do. So giving away taxpayer land was not really going to, it was going to be offset by maybe reducing funding. So that's the reason that it was done.
Yeah, but that wasn't explained, right? In the notes, in the actual minutes of the meeting, none of that is described, right? None of that is detailed.
It was just about donating the land. Yeah, we go into more detail when it comes to it.
And what I'm asking, right, basically what I'm asking you to do is basically table that motion, right?
We'll look into that.
And then also, excuse me, also, put it up for bid, right? I think it's taxpayers' property as well, right? I think we deserve the right to actually purchase it.
Absolutely.
Do you agree?
Absolutely. We'll look into that.
Mr. Gonzalez, Mrs. Anderson, when you bought from the city, contacted you, you made some inquiries about it?
Yes, so actually my dad inquired, right? You know, because I don't live here, right? But I'm a taxpayer of this, I have several businesses here, I employ people as well.
As a city?
No, nobody contacted us whatsoever, right? Me. So, not to point out Mr. DiPiazza, right, but he contacted my dad, right, and said, we know why you're calling because you inquired about the property, right? So it's been known, right, that we want to inquire about the property.
And I think our attorney is going to look into, you know, the property, what it looks like, and maybe he's going to find out that there's been people who were interested in the property because, you know, but the CHDI, you know, they requested it, they do an offer of community, they, you know, it's a, you know, they help the community in different ways and it was going to be used for a good cause, you know, but I believe our attorneys are going to look into it and if there's any, you know, hiccups in there or whatever, they'll probably address it with us.
May I say something? Go ahead. The staff's position when we got the initial inquiry, and I thought that was communicated to you, that was that we thought that property was not for sale. It's part of the, it's part of what used to be the Williamson-Dickey, the BF property. We thought that was for future economic development usage. So that's what we gave you, I thought we gave you a response on that, perhaps we did not.
No, sir, you did not give me a response.
The state statutes allow you to gift the property to a nonprofit for public purpose. So you have the authority to do that.
And just a clarification point, it is landlocked. So landlocked means that there's no outside access to the property. So what, it is accessible by the other people who landlock it, but what, when Mr. DiPiazza was coming in and said it was landlocked, what we just meant is there's no public access to that property.
We'll look into this, there's probably a lot of rules around it.
And so how would I get notified? How would I get notified?
If we put it on the other, on the next agenda? It's on the next agenda, so...
I don't think it's on the next agenda. We're getting that property appraised along with the property at the Business Park. You need to know what the value of property is that you're donating.
Yes, before we do anything else.
That's where we give it away.
Once we put it on the agenda, we'll...
So it'll be, that'll probably be, it'll be whenever we receive the appraisal, and then it would have come back to you anyway, but my, I just made the problem.
So would I get notified because I didn't get notified?
Yeah, it's on the agenda, you can come and voice.
So I won't receive notification?
It'll be on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay? It's not going to be on this one, I'm going to do it on this one.
First, we're going to get prior notification.
Miss, Miss, Miss Anderson will call you.
Yes.
I'll be happy to call you through that supplement.
Okay.
I'll call you first.
Do you have my telephone number?
No, but I have your address.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez senior?
Counsel? All I ask, that y'all look into this, not just put it aside, not say, well, maybe they don't need it. I mean, we inquired about it and she's the, she's the person we contacted, okay? It's not like nothing new, we just want a shot at it. If you put it up for bids, hey, we'll bid on it. If you want to give it to the CHBI, whatever it is, because you feel like they can use it better, but you have seven acres down the road that you could give them, okay? So it's all up to y'all. Y'all are the ones that decide this. I'm just asking, give us a fair shake on it, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
We'll look at you, thank you.
Mr. Alex Stein?
Thank you, counsel. My name's Alex Stein and a lot of times I speak at a lot of city council meetings and usually I like to use my platform to make people laugh, to expose a lot of the leadership problems that we have. But here today, there's nothing funny. When I drive into your city, there's a stain on the city that will never be lifted, ever. It doesn't matter what you do, it doesn't matter how reactive you are, it's your lack of proactive results. We have Principal Gutierrez, who was fired, that knew of security issues. Knew of, the principal knew of security issues. And now twenty-one people are dead, nineteen students. So you can say, oh, well, it's not, it's the lack of police force. Well, let me go, Chip, let me use my three minutes.
We're not the school district.
Listen, I understand you're not the school district, but this is your city. Are you the leader of this city, Chip? Do you lead the city?
Not the city.
You're telling me the city council is not the leaders of this city, is that what you're telling me? Is that what you're trying to tell me, Chip?
Not the school district.
So you guys don't consider yourself leaders? See, that's why. It's because you don't consider yourself a leader, you don't take responsibility for your action. That's why you sit there and that's why you are a direct reflection of these cops. They were cowards. It took them seventy-seven minutes and you're a coward. You sit there like a coward trying to combat what I'm saying. I'm bringing awareness to your city. You still had the audacity after twenty-one people died, Chief Arredondo, you swore in! I don't care that he resigned, you swore him in! You do two meetings a month! Mayor McLaughlin, that's twenty-four meetings a year, can't even show up! I don't care where he's at! He should be here digitally! I don't see a screen with his face! This is 2022! We just had a pandemic! People can be at a meeting digitally and remotely, but you, Baldair, you can't figure it out! Because you can't protect your twenty-one kids and you can't run a meeting digitally! Because you know why? He dogged protest too much. You know you're guilty and you feel guilty and that's why you're yelling, that's why you're combating me, and that's why I'm here to expose you guys. Because we've got to hold our leadership responsible for twenty-one people being dead. Do you realize that? You know how many people? I think we all know and we're all very frustrated with what happened. I know you did not pull the trigger, but it doesn't matter. There is a set of circumstances that a domino effect happened. One domino set off stuff that a kid was able to get through an unlocked door and shoot twenty-one people. That's pathetic. That's disgusting. And now this is the biggest story in the entire world. And guess what? They're going to take away, they're trying to take away the guns from three hundred and fifty million people because a school couldn't lock a back door, basically. And because of the response time was so disgusting, seventy-seven minutes. I have these pictures, this is not you, Baldair, I want you guys to show you this. This is somebody during hand sanitizing. He's more worried about protecting himself from COVID than protecting the nineteen children that are bleeding to death. This is a cop on his phone smiling. There's nothing funny about nineteen children bleeding to death on their cell phones saying, I want my mom! And then when their mom tried to run in, what did they do? They stopped the parents from coming in the school. That's pathetic, that's disgusting. You guys should all be ashamed of yourselves and I'm going to expose this. And I know, let me just say my last point. I know the investigation will come out and you guys will probably not get in trouble because it's not necessarily your fault, but you guys as leaders should take responsibility for this in order to be proactive instead of reactive so no more children have to die. Because right after the fact, you didn't let go of Arredondo, if another school shooting would have happened, he still would have been in charge. Think about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Oh, and if any of these parents want to meet me and get any, you know, you want any attention, please contact me after the meeting, I'm Alex Stein, thank you.
Mr. Jesse Reese?
Really don't know how to feel about Alex coming up here like that and, you know, obviously it's a lot of raw emotion. I'm not sure if we're getting, you know, I've seen his videos and stuff, I'm not sure if we can play it or, I mean, he speaks the truth in some ways, but at the same time, he just brings the feelings right out and kind of resurfaces everything that we've been through, so I don't know how to, I really don't know how I feel about Alex at this moment. I think I agree with the young lady. Anyhow, let me get it together here. So I wanted to, I wanted to commend you for adding item six C to the, to the agenda, providing resolution, kind of bring attention to the gun issue, kind of putting pressure on Governor Abbott to address the issue with the guns and I'm sure everyone's going to vote on it to pass this, move along. Don't know how far it's going to get, but it's one step at a time, put pressure on Governor Abbott to step it up a little bit. And I think, I think for the most part, everybody, everybody I talked to says it's got to change, at least raise it up, you got to start somewhere. You provided an explanation on Mr. Fargas, I wanted to kind of get clarification where he stands on the termination list or any type of, you know, action's going to take place, but I appreciate coming out and basically stating that upfront. One other point that my, one of my coworkers brought up today, he sends this kid to a private school and he asked me, he's concerned about the security at those schools, he understands that it's private, but he wants to see, he wanted me to ask you guys, if y'all can provide some kind of, like what you're doing to work with, for example, Sacred Heart, Phillips and the Uvalde Classical, the Uvalde Classical Academy. If there's any, if y'all are working with them, maybe looking at floor plans and running dry runs and stuff like that, kind of talk about that a little bit, please.
I know I talked to the chief yesterday, we're going to be increasing our patrols in those, in all the schools, not just the private schools. All the schools are going to have extra patrols during, you know, I guess when they first come in and when they're leaving school. So yes, we are, we're going to be working with them, I talked to the chief yesterday, and there will be extra patrols during the school times.
And I know what I heard today, that DPS, they ask DPS to be at all the schools on opening day.
Including the, including private ones, is this?
I don't know about private, but public schools.
We'll get, we'll make sure.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you all.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Well, I think I'm going to come in, I thought it was going to get really, really good and I didn't rate, but Mrs. Stein, thank you very much. I won't be celebrating, I'm going to try not to cuss. Anyway, when I use the word "you," I'm not just talking about you guys, I'm talking also about the school board, where I use the word "you" first. Okay, this is to the city manager for a second. The large cross that's still at Ace Bellbon, when will it be moved to the town square? Is it planning to get moved or is it just stay at Ace Bellbon?
I have no idea, to answer that question.
Well, who's in charge of that? Ace Bellbon?
I believe the people that brought the cross ended up putting it where...
I'm sorry?
I said I believe the people that brought the cross ended up putting it where they could have...
Do you all guys want that cross at Ace Bellbon?
No.
Do you want the cross over here at the town plaza? A memorial, a memory? There's your answer right there. I'm going to get angry, I could just feel it coming, oh, I'm going to... I have been to several meetings and I'm seeing the families and the citizens of Uvalde ask the same questions over and over and over again. I find it absurd that they do not get answers. You guys already have the answers, I'm sure of that. Who's doing the investigation? Who's doing all that? Who's investigating? Is it somebody in Texas or in, what company's doing this?
Name is Mr. Prado and I think he's from Austin. Jesse Prado, he's retired from Austin, he's...
Now, why would you not get somebody from another state to come into Uvalde, to the state of Texas? You guys know these officers, you guys know Chief Arredondo, you know what's going on. You know these people. How do I know? How do we know that you're going to not just kind of watch and watch about the truth on this? But I do believe you already, already know the answers. And you want us to trust you guys, you need to trust us too with the answers. We're not children. We're not children, we need to know what's going on. You're always, I noticed at first, always a meeting going on, meetings, 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 meetings. Why don't you go ahead and have another special meeting where the city council and the school board, we all meet together, even if we have to stay a little longer, and find out what's going on together? It's like the right hand tells the left hand and there's no in-between. There's two different stories all the time. You go into town, I go to town, I talk to people, I've got so many different stories that I hear. They're sick of it, they're sick! I'm sure if you had that special meeting, we wouldn't mind to stay a little later than, you know, an hour, just to get the answers. The families need to start healing and the process of healing is to get the answers. As long as the answers are not here, they're not going to be able to heal, heals. Also, what I want to ask, what about all this, I saw last week, I was not even in town last week, but I saw on Google or something, that some of the citizens of Uvalde went and had a fundraiser with plates, dinner plates or something like that, for like ten dollars a plate or something. They were using that money to give to the families that need the money. Now, what has happened to that money that the families need? Now, couldn't they just take your bills and show, this is what we need to pay now? Did they have to keep waiting and waiting and waiting? I still don't understand about the investigation, why didn't get somebody from out of town, out of state to come investigate? This is, God, it's like cleaning, it's like cleaning your house. I'm going to get somebody to clean my house that I can tell the... You're all liars, anyway, and you're cowards. He's right, you guys are cowards, all of you. It is a cover-up and I think we're all sick of that. Uvalde is a very strong city and we're going to be up your asses until we get answers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Emma Trimble?
Hello, sorry you couldn't read my writing. Well, as some of you know, my name is Emma Trimble and I am a minister here in Uvalde. And I decided to move here in 2018 for no other reason except my concern for Uvalde, for the residents, primarily the children. I don't know if I made that clear the last time I was here, speaking before you, but my children have, or the children have been a great concern to me. I want to let you know that I appreciate the fact that you are stepping up and not moving into and running this as a status quo type of meeting. I think the parents most certainly deserve that, most certainly. I appreciate the fact that you are doing this. I feel it is a reasonable, reasonable service. It's the least that we can do as a community. I appreciate the fact that I feel the parents have been extremely patient. I don't know that I would be as patient. I, I, I can't imagine what they're going through. I have to tell you that I have walked through this process, I have waited very patiently to have an opportunity to speak simply because I didn't want to ignite or cause more trouble. But I do want to speak truth and I want to tell you that the way you started this meeting by communicating what's going on, I feel that was very good, very wise. I don't think these parents are asking for anything that's unreasonable. Everything they're asking for is very logical. I would ask for the same and maybe not quite as patiently. In 2018, I guess you all know how Facebook works, well, I had a memory come up in July this month... I still don't understand about the investigation. Why don't you get somebody from out of town, out of state to come investigate? This is, God, it's like cleaning, it's like cleaning your house. I'm gonna get somebody to clean my house that I can tell the, you know, liars. Anyway, and you're cowards. He's right, you guys are cowards. All of you. It is a cover-up and I think we're all sick of that. Uvalde is a very strong city. And we're gonna be up your asses until we get answers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Emma Trimble, Ms. Emma Trimble?
Hello, sorry you couldn't read my writing. Well, as some of you know, my name is Emma Trimble and I am a minister here in Uvalde. And I decided to move here in 2018 for no other reason except my concern for Uvalde, for the residents, primarily the children. I don't know if I made that clear the last time I was here, speaking before you, but my children have, or the children have been a great concern to me. I wanna let you know that I appreciate the fact that you are stepping up and not moving into and running this as a status quo type of meeting. I think the parents most certainly deserve that, most certainly. I appreciate the fact that you are doing this. I feel it is a reasonable, reasonable service. It's the least that we can do as a community. I appreciate the fact that I feel the parents have been extremely patient. I don't know that I would be as patient. I, I can't imagine what they're going through. I have to tell you that I have walked through this process. I have waited very patiently to have an opportunity to speak simply because I didn't want to ignite or cause more trouble. But I do wanna speak truth. And I wanna tell you that the way you started this meeting by communicating what's going on, I feel that was very good, very wise. I don't think these parents are asking for anything that's unreasonable. Everything they're asking for is very logical. I would ask for the same and maybe not quite as patiently. In 2018, I guess you all know how Facebook works. Well, I had a memory come up in July this month, 2018, on the very day that they held the first school board meeting at the auditorium. And I was speaking before the Senate Select Committee on Violence and School Safety in July, four years ago, 2018. I made multiple trips to Austin to communicate the need for us to address these issues in our schools. And, you know, there's all kinds of things that we can do. We can do fences, we can do metal detectors, we can do armed teachers. We have the, what is it, the marshal, what is it called? The guardian program, the dogs, the protective dogs. There's a whole program that we can execute and implement. I know you're not the school board, but I know you have influence upon the school board. And I'm assuming that there are some codes and safety standards that you have to approve. I don't know that that's 100% correct, but I know that you have some voice in that. And I ask you to use every, every single measure that you have available to you to bring some peace to these families. As I said, I don't believe they're asking for anything unreasonable. They don't wanna have to not send their kids to school. They want their children to enjoy other children and feel safe at school. I talked to some seniors this year and they said, you know, it doesn't even matter to us that we're not gonna get to have the same kind of homecoming and the same kind of graduation because we're gonna be nervous about it. But what does matter to us is that the other children are gonna have to go through their entire lives up until graduation day being afraid. So if we can give the parents safety standards that are tried and true, nothing's 100%, but I think if the city would bring in a third-party evaluation as opposed to allowing the school to be responsible for that and they get to call all the shots. Can the city do that? Can the city bring in a third-party? I have a very highly decorated individual who was the head of the CIA for one of our presidents. He now has a security business and would be an incredibly unbiased person that would come in with all the purest intentions. I wanna say two more things, thank you for the time. The program that I would like to implement requires cooperation, city collaboration from the city, from the police department and from the school and from the citizens. So I ask you to give me the opportunity to present this to you in a collaborative, community way. I have to say, Uvalde's a tough nut to crack. If you're not a part of the inside core of this city, you're gonna have a really hard time getting in the door. But I pray to God that this situation has brought some of these things to light because things need to change in Uvalde. And we have an opportunity to make a historic difference. But we can't do status quo, we just can't do that anymore. Last but not least, I pray that all of you and the parents as well would pray and ask God for wisdom. Because none of this is gonna get settled with just attorneys and all kinds of quarrels. It takes God, the Spirit of God, to move in upon our hearts. And you know, Solomon was in charge of numerous, many, many people. And he prayed and he asked God to confirm his promise that he had made to his father, David. And God wants to move in on us and he wants to do something good here. If just a handful of us will get united in spirit and in truth and ask God for the one thing that Solomon asked for. He asked for wisdom and God said, I'm gonna give it to you. So I pray in the name of Jesus, Father God, I ask that your Spirit would move upon us, everyone here. And for these parents, Father, I just speak your peace that passes understanding that only you can give a God. Move in upon us, God, we invite you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Emma.
Thank you, Mr. Trimble. You mentioned a lot of good things that I think need to happen. I know the parents want answers. Nobody wants to give those answers more than I do, other than the city council. It is a process that's gonna take place, unfortunately. I am confident that the agency that we hired, Mr. Prado and his company, or his officers, are gonna be transparent in their investigation. I say that because I'm gonna want answers too. I'm gonna ask the questions that need to be asked. I'm a former police officer. So I got some insight as to actions that need to be taken. And I can assure the families, this community, that I'm gonna do everything within my power as a member of this council to give you the answers that you want to hear, that you need to hear. Transparency, absolutely. Were there any policies or procedures that were violated or not taken into account? This investigation is gonna bring that out. And if there's any officer who was in violation of any type of policy or procedure that they needed to act on and did not and had, that may have cost these children to die, these teachers to die, I can assure you heads are gonna roll, if all is unconcerned, it's gonna happen. Thank you.
Mr. Breckcross?
It looks like I was just locked his hand semitizing. I just have a few questions real quick. Mr. City Manager, you have the capabilities of putting the officers that were there that day on administrative leave?
Yes, I would say that, yes.
Okay, so why don't we do that until the investigation is over? Because I'm gonna tell you what, and I've seen a couple here right now. That ain't right. I mean, one of them that's here right now, actually, when I asked him if he was the one in the picture, smirked at me and told me to have a nice day. So aside from being pissed off about that, they need to be suspended until the investigation is over, 100%. We don't feel safe with them, nobody does. And then you're gonna have them right here. We understand due process and everything, I mean, we get it, we understand. But until the investigation is done, they should be on administrative leave. Will you at least think about it?
We went about as far as we could go based on information we had. As other council members have said, as more information becomes available to us. You know, I don't know what else to tell you because that's.
Okay.
The mayor pro temp said, we wanna do this correctly. So much about what has gone on has been wrong and we wanna get this right.
No, and like I said, I understand, but come on.
That's what, that's what I can tell you.
Okay. Also, have y'all been in direct contact with UCISD on preventative measures? I know that y'all aren't them, but have y'all gotten together? Are y'all working together to do anything?
I think they are on start of school, getting students and things like that.
I can't answer, I know.
At least you've just been in touch.
We've had the discussions, yes.
I think it's the start of school.
Okay, yes. All right.
I'd like to add something to Emma and you.
And I'm about to leave, but it isn't, I'm not walking out or anything. I've got another meeting to go to, but go ahead.
See you at the next meeting. I think what we have been doing has influenced the school district, the school board and how they handle their meetings and what they're doing. And we're gonna push, and I know all of us do it, I do it really hard.
Yes, sir.
To make sure they're respecting you guys. And you guys respect us, I respect you.
Exactly.
And we're pushing them to do the exact same thing. I think it's made a little difference.
Yes, sir.
And I hope it keeps getting better.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate it.
You know I'm there.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel Myers?
City Council, Assistant City Manager, Mr. Cardenas. On Sunday, there was a meeting at 3835 East Main, the church where we pastor. We had families there that their children are survivors. And what I heard, it was hard to hear. Children that are sleeping with their parents. Children that are afraid to go back to school. Children that are now waiting in bed. Two months later and these kids are hurting, I mean hurting. Mr. Bonner, would you stand for a second? Thank you. These children are hurting. We cannot let things just keep going the way they are. And I wanna thank you because you guys are talking back, talking to the people. You're not sitting there like zombies like yesterday at the city council, the school, uh, school board, school board meeting. Thank you for talking to us and I just wanna go back to the last meeting that we had on the 12th. I believe you were in charge of the Plaza? Where you said that the families were asked to remove their belongings? And it wasn't so. They were told. Did you get that cleared up? Did you get that straightened out?
Didn't get that straightened out.
Yes, the people that you thought that they were asking the people, but they weren't asking, they were telling the people, what came about that?
We looked into it and we backed up on our position on the Plaza. And as you can see, the memorials have returned and they'll be there indefinitely.
Because according to what you were telling us, you were telling us that the people were being asked and it wasn't so.
I'm gonna chalk that up to miscommunication between my staff and the.
That's what we want, we want transparency. We want transparency.
That was not our intent, that was not what we were trying to achieve. As I stated before, we thought we had an understanding and we were proceeding on that.
All right, I just want you to know, City Council, the families, I can't even speak for the ones that are here that were affected directly, but the ones, the kids that were survived. I personally saw a little boy, we met at Rob, and he was completely the opposite for the massacre took place. Just being there, just talking to us, he broke down and cried. We hugged him and prayed with him and cried with him. So know that there's a lot of pain still out there, a lot of pain. Two months later and these kids relive this over and over and over again. This special meeting, this special, that are investigating the Uvalde PD, it would be nice if you would have one of us peons be a part of that. Just to know what's going on, just to, what are you guys doing? I mean, why are you doing that? Why aren't you asking this and why aren't you asking that? Because we have a lot of questions, we have a lot of questions. So again, thank you for dialoguing with us. We're asking for transparency, that's how we're asking for it. Talk to us, talk to us. And before I step down, on Saturday, there was a, what we call the Parque Mexicano. There was a benefit being held over there for families that were affected. We're out there selling plates for food for other families. Why do they have to resort to that? Where's all the funds for these families that are affected, literally? Or out there, the teacher, Mr. Reyes, was out there also. Why are they having to do that, City Council? Why? Is that initiative they took up on their own or where's their help? Where's their help? I'm asking you, please, and this is for the families. They need help, they need help. So I ask you, I ask you to, to help the families and to all the families that are here. I would encourage you to talk to Mr. Bonner. He has great insight on helping you, on your legal rights. Thank you, City Council.
Mr. Myers, real quick, if you know of any family that needs help, I mean, I know the fire department helps. I know there's a lot of organizations, the churches are helping. So please spread the word and tell them to reach out to those people, okay? So that way they can get the help they need. Now, the fund that's in the bank, it's tied up, it's, there's a committee?
We have nothing to do with that fund in the bank, that's, that's. That fund, the big fund that everybody hears about, none of the funds have anything to do with the city of Uvalde. Those are done privately, the bank is the, I guess, has that fund and the state got together and everybody created a committee. We have nothing to do with that. However, the city is, if families have problems paying the bills or water bills and things like that, we are helping with that. If y'all need help, we are here to help and we will do that. Number two, the fire department, Uvalde Volunteer Fire Department, PayPal charitable fund. If you guys wanna get some money in people's hands really quick, donate to that. We will make sure the families get money. Originally, we started for the families who, for the injured, for some of those that were still in the hospitals and we've expanded. If we can get more money in that account, the fire department's gonna help all the families. So if anybody, the press, if you guys put that out to Uvalde Volunteer Fire Department, there's a PayPal charitable fund, donate to that and that money, if we got enough money, next week that's gonna go in their pockets. I guarantee you.
Okay, I was just curious because it's hard to understand these funds that came in and here are families that were affected, literally.
There's dozens of funds.
Out there having to do something like that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, good evening. First and foremost, I wanted to tell y'all, y'all are doing a lot better than what y'all did from the first meeting. Mr. Lanos, I give you props, you have changed your attitude. Can't speak for him because he's not here. You, I feel like, I call BS. I feel like you have enough to put them on administrative leave, you just choose not to. Again, hiding, which that's just my opinion. I don't have much to say and I really, I'm not gonna sit up here and go on because I need to get to another meeting as well. But I just wanted to let y'all know that I appreciate what y'all are trying to do. I see a difference in y'all. But again, like I told the city, the school district yesterday, don't mistake our kindness for weakness because we're not done.
Thank you. That's right, we're not done until we get everything done. All our answers will be, will be answered. Because we have as many questions as the family has on this incident, so.
Sorry, one more thing I forgot to address, as far as the miscommunication, I know there was miscommunication on the cross. Because we were told that you guys were supposed to have a meeting with the parents to figure out where they wanted to put that cross. That meeting never happened because y'all denied it. So just for as far as miscommunication.
I think I was about the only one who's contacted on that cross from the front singers. I think we brought that in. I was contacted on Thursday, and I think you can see Facebook posts about it, if you go back and look. On Thursday I was contacted, they said, "We're coming Saturday to put this thing up." And I was like, "I, the cities cannot help you that quick." And I wasn't the one who said, "Do you want to put it in storage?", that was somebody else.
Yeah, but I contacted one of y'all ahead of time, when we found out way before, when it was already being built, I contacted one of y'all. And I'm not gonna throw you into the mess, but you know who you are, and specifically says, "We were gonna find out, we were gonna hold a meeting and speak to the parents, find out what they wanted to do."
Well, that's new information, I'll talk to you later.
Thank you.
Ms. Tina Taylor?
Ms. Tina Taylor?
Tina? Yes, there's Tina, she's been here. Okay, Ms. Tina's not here. Diana Oviedo Carru?
Good evening, Council, Diana Oviedo Carru, City of Uvalde resident. In some ways, what more can I say? Because everybody is basically repeating and asking the same things. I appreciate that you came out right away at the beginning of the meeting after your closed session and gave us an update on the internal investigation. I do have a question as to, what is the purpose of the investigation when it's completed? In terms of, will that be what you use to determine discipline and dismissal as appropriate? And then the second question that goes with that is, what's the timeline? Has Mr. Prado given you any indication of how long that investigation is going to take? And when can the families in the community expect the report?
Mr. Prado started the investigation. Whatever he determines is the proper recommendation that he's gonna give us, that's what we're gonna do. And we might even go more, we don't know, okay? The timeframe, he does not have a certain time, because once he starts the investigation, it could take a little bit longer. So if he tells us, "Hey, we're gonna finish in thirty days", and then something else comes up, because during the investigations, stuff's come up, it could go longer. So he did not give us a definite timeframe, but I'm hoping he finishes as fast as possible so we can give you, the families, the right answers to your questions.
He has told us that it's his top priority, his investigation.
He's...
It's not six months, like everybody else says on our investigation.
Well, that's good.
Okay.
How many officers are on the police department?
Total?
Total number of officers?
Forty, thirty-nine sworn officers.
Thirty-nine? And are all of the officers part of the investigation, or just those that were on site?
All the officers that responded to that incident.
And how many are those?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-four?
Something like that.
That's what we got.
Okay. I know that the council tells us that you are not able to, at this time, for legal reasons, the advice of your attorneys, able to do administrative leave for the officers that were on-site, specifically the ones in the hallway that obviously have the best opportunity to stop the shooter. But can you, at a minimum, at a minimum, to provide some sense of comfort to the families primarily, put them on desk duty? Take them off the streets so that those are not the officers that they and we have to depend on should we need an officer to respond to a crisis in our life? Because there is no confidence from the families and many in this community that those officers are going to serve us well. And so can you at least, at a minimum, put them on desk duty? And if that is going to cause an issue in regards to coverage for the city, ask the governor or whomever is able to approve something to provide DPS officers to step in to support your other officers and Chief Rodriguez to continue to provide services and protect the city. I don't think that's a lot to ask. You say you can't do administrative leave at a minimum, and I think you could certainly do this, is to put them on desk duty. And from my observations and readings of the material that's been put out, obviously Mariano Pargas is already on administrative leave, so that's taken care of. But I believe then also, and I'm gonna, I don't know their rank, so Javier Martinez, Greg Villa, Eduardo Canales, Daniel Coronado, and Justin Mendoza. Those are the officers that, to my knowledge, from the conversations with the families and supporters, are the ones that are really needing to be off the street. So, am I to understand from the investigation done by Mr. Prado, he is going to make recommendations as to how to deal with discipline and dismissal? Or is that going to be internal between Chief Rodriguez and Mr. DiPiazza? Recommendations to the council, I don't know. Are they gonna have the authority to make that decision without you?
Mr. Prado will make the recommendations, and then we will consider, of course, through the city manager police, the chief of police, disciplinary actions to what we think is right for that officer.
And I, for one, do believe that there needs to be levels of accountability based on participation or lack of participation, where they were on-site, that type of thing. But that's just my opinion. The one thing that really, and it, you know, kind of just all falls within the same conversation that just really bothers me is that my understanding from the investigative report, Mariano Pargas was given order by Chief Rodriguez, though he was not in the state, to set up a command post that day. And that didn't happen. A command post would have helped the situation. It was a direct order, and it wasn't followed. And that is really very disturbing to think that that could have prevented some things along with having an ensign commander, which obviously Mr. Avedondo continues to tell us it wasn't him. I guess the other, the only other thing I will say, and the last thing I will say, is that I too appreciate that the council is having a conversation with us, is attempting to the best of your ability, given your constraints and your attorney's advice. Attempting to try to help us understand, attempting to take action as you're able, and that is very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Rosenberg Risa?
Councilman? Yeah. One of the things that I wanted to stress was, like I had asked over there at the school board, was that myself, I go pick up my grandson at two o'clock, four o'clock, and all of that. And I always see police underneath the tree for hours and hours, not walking to schools or anything. And that's when I mentioned to the school board and Mr. Harrell that what you need to do is get out of your office and walk the schools. All the home school boards should be walking to school. It doesn't take much to go out there. Don't even tell them you're going to the school, just the doors and everything. So, I'm asking this to the city council, to everybody there. You know, don't wait for something to happen or for it to go on the agenda ten days from now or whatever, like the school board is thirty days. You know, I'm gonna ask you to go ahead, because drive around, whatever. If you see anything, I mean, it's just common sense. Because myself, sometimes, I drive to the Walmart, I see a police car parked in this area. I go back, hour later, that car is still there. Not doing anything. I don't know if he's sleeping, I don't know if he's patrolling that area or what. But there's no need for a police car to sit in one location for an hour. There's no way. So, what I'm asking y'all to do is take time, a little bit of your time, in the afternoons or in mornings or whatever, just drive around town. If you see anything, I mean, say something, say something to the police, to the mayor, anybody. You know, because that's gonna help the citizens, it's gonna help us, I mean, the community, everything. You know, don't wait for something to happen. Just like the school board, period. Not a single person of the school board had gone to the school. Not a single person, because they couldn't even answer my question. So, but I want to make sure that does not happen here with the city. I know y'all help more than the school board. And to that, thank you very much. But at the same time, you gotta help the citizens too. You're helping the students, everybody. If you need to, I don't know, it might be a little difficult to go to the school once everything apparently is gonna be secure, but it doesn't hurt to try. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Risa.
Mr. Risa, I'd just like to respond to some of your requests. I think this investigation that's gonna be done by Mr. Prado, he is gonna make some recommendations, you know, to the chief of police and the department. If there's things that need to be addressed or changed, that's gonna be part of the investigation also. Just so you know, that's the procedure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Risa, I want to say something.
Yes, sir. Sat back a little bit, and, you know, not to give any attention to Alex or whatever, but I don't, you know, I don't appreciate Alex, whatever his name is, I don't want to give him any more credit, coming into our house, coming into our city, and disrespecting the families like that. It brought the feelings back up, can't even focus, what do I want to say? Totally unacceptable. When you see the county line, Alex, and it says Uvalde County, turn that truck around, whatever you drive, and send it back to your little town, your little Dallas where you come from. Do not play on the feelings of these people. And for one other thing is, is I ask people not to share the video. He came here, he does his little ratings or sets up a little camera or something, he goes out there. What does he do? Take the camera out, and he's probably in his car uploading the stuff, you know, pay no attention to someone like that, you know? And you gotta give him free speech, gotta give him three minutes and stuff like that, but apologize to the families, we're totally disrespectful.
I want to apologize for being verbal towards him, but I'll take, I'll take a yelling from any family member in here all day long. You guys could sit here and yell at us and scream at us all day long, I'll take that. I won't take that from someone grandstanding. Period.
Yes, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Risa.
And I know I'm gonna be awkward there, and people are sitting, have dozen emails calling me all kinds of names after that, so.
I'll say thank you.
Uh, let's move on to item number five, Consider Gent. Make a motion, whatever. Five-eight, consider the minutes of July twelve, twenty-two, regular city council meeting. Consider, five-B, consider the payment of bills over five thousand from July eight, twenty-two, through July twenty-two, twenty-two.
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we, uh, from the Senate, give the minute five-eight.
There was a motion by Mr. Loyola, second by Mr. Mulkey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Uh, item six, new business, six-eight. Consider the request on Victoria, I hope I say it right, during, with Victoria Communications to allow patrons who have purchased alcohol beverages at Broadway eight-thirty to carry them on the sidewalk during the Four Square Friday event that takes place in downtown Uvalde.
Council members, so technically, I'm asking permission on behalf of you, because I'm asking permission on behalf of the entire Main Street and downtown jurisdiction to continue the Four Square Friday initiative and let the downtown businesses take advantage of that at their leisure. So technically, the ordinance, it being stated in there that the second Friday of every month, to allow patrons to walk downtown freely with open containers of alcohol isn't technically on the books. When we were looking into taking a bigger initiative and being involved in a bigger event for Four Square Friday at our Broadway eight-three-oh location, and looking into TABC and things of that, and what we were and were not allowed to encourage patrons to do. Um, I was told that it wasn't technically on the books still. So I'm asking actually for every Four Square Friday, second Friday of every month, six-thirty to, or six to eleven PM, just open for our downtown area.
If I can just jump in, what she means is, in the state of Texas, unless we specifically ban people from having alcohol on the streets, then you can have alcohol on the street everywhere except in our parks, that's banned. So you guys have had that before, you before? But so we have no ordinance that prevents people from drinking, whilst they meander. Uh, and so what Ms. Durrance's point is just that she's letting you guys know, we don't have that, so you don't actually have to vote on anything here, but so you are aware. Uh, Four Square does serve alcohol, and people take it as they kind of go back and forth.
Well, we did approve it on the main park, in the square already.
Uh, so specifically, we, right, so technically the square is a park.
Yeah, we approved that.
And we've approved that and kind of just all agreed, like, as Four Square, they're meandering through, we haven't really done anything enforcement-wise. We have specifically approved it for events that we've had in other city parks, so we have like queso and beer.
Queso, 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 yes.
Uh, we specifically approved it for that event in that park. But the rest of the town, there's no, I mean, the state of Texas just does not have any bans on alcohol. So when people say open container, they mean it'll be a quote, you can have an open container, not on the street.
So, is it proper for us to, to say we want an ordinance to say you can drink on the street, or just believe it as it is?
I, there's no, there's no ordinance necessary, because there is, so in essence, no ordinance means that you can drink, you can have an open container on the street, as a pedestrian.
Thank you for that clarification, Mrs. Beckerson.
So maybe, maybe what we should do is have a motion to kind of do a blanket for the square?
Here we go, that's...
Just for the square?
Right, because since the plaza is a park, then by our ordinance, we don't allow, um, park, we've done it in specific occasions like the Hanafest, but this would be just saying, yes, even for Four Square.
So would this be an ordinance, or this is just a?
I don't think it really needs to be an ordinance, because it's more of a, it's just like a non-enforcement issue.
The park ordinance I've written just says if someone is going to serve alcohol in the park, it must be, they got permission from y'all. So this is a blanket permission for Four Square.
I'll make a motion, recreate whatever paperwork is required to allow blanket approvals during Four Square Friday to serve or allow to carry alcohol and serve, so I can throw that in, in our square downtown. And leave the rest of them out. Well, should we say Four Square Friday, or should we say downtown celebrations?
Uh, let's say Four Square Friday, but we certainly don't encourage that for the Christmas, which is always a children's event.
Four Square Friday.
I've got a question, Mr. Durrance.
Yes, sir.
Does your ABC license, I said there, but Broadway, does it have any restrictions or prohibitions about alcohol leaving the premises?
No, you cannot take, from what I understand, I actually called TABC and spoke with an officer, and she said that people cannot bring alcohol onto our premises as per TABC law, but taking it out, it would be up to the onus of the person what they were and weren't doing with it. They're up to their own personal... Yeah. Yes, sir. But I'm asking just on behalf of, you know, if Julian's, you know, what they want... But I'm asking just on behalf of, you know, if Julian's, you know, what they want to give, yes. Just in, just in regards, yes.
I second that motion. So a motion was made by Steve King and seconded.
Can you repeat your motion? My motion was to be a blanket approval for, for the square, not necessarily for any business, for Four Square Fridays, that, uh, alcohol can be carried in the square and can be served there if we have a vendor who has an address or an office. Kind of make it generic.
Yes. So we have motion by Councilman King, seconded by myself. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you and thank you for your service and dedication to the community.
Uh, item six B, consider request from UCI.
No, that's tabled.
That was tabled. Six B is tabled. Item sixteen, consider resolution asking Governor Greg Abbott to call a special session of the legislators to consider raising the minimum age of purchase semi-automatic assault rifles from 18 to 21. Uh, I'm going to make a motion that we approve six C.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Milwaukee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion? I was just to make sure. If you want to.
I've got a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Durrance, what, what is the, how does this resolution work?
It's a statement of council's opinion and a request of the governor. We'll send it to the governor's office. It's, it's, uh, I think it's, I think other entities in the area are passing this resolution. It's an expression of your, your request, your, your
And how do we know that the governor's going to actually receive it?
Do you know if he actually received it? I mean, the senator's office, I don't know.
Well, we don't know, but you all even see it, right?
What happens after, after we get to the governor's office, I don't, I don't know. I would, well, I'm not even going to editorialize it, but I do.
And I understand, I think the county commissioners have proved something similar. I think last night the school board proved something similar, but, uh,
Probably not much more than the symbolic, yes.
Exactly. It's just a, it's just a motion, uh, and, uh,
It just puts a little bit more pressure on them, but we want the citizens of Texas, citizens of Uvalde. Uh, you know what? We vote for you, take it into consideration. No, our expression to the, to the governor, hey, look at it, we are, we are voters here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item sixteen, considered? Go ahead.
Can I make a comment on this?
On the resolution?
On the resolution, uh, I think Mr. DiPiazza said very faintly, it's a symbolic type thing. I really don't think it's worth the paper he's written, honestly. Because, uh, we have a governor in office right now that, if you all recall, the massacre, the shooting that happened in value was on May 24th, a Tuesday. On that following Friday, two, three days later, he was on the big screen addressing the NRA in Houston, Texas. I don't, you know, we're asking him to, to, uh, call a, a special session, this is what this is. And I doubt very seriously it's going to happen. Um, I hope it does, I hope, I hope he calls a session. But really, truly, I don't think it's going to happen. We have an election coming up in November, he's on the ballot. And if it's going to happen, it's probably going to be after the election. I, uh, I went back and I looked at the video, the video actually where he spoke in front of the NRA through a big screen, and you can go and Google it and find it yourself. But he talked about all the laws that we have about guns. That's what he talked about. We know their law about that. Uh, y'all are making a point to say that, uh, carrying a gun on campus is a felony. Usual, right? We know that. He made no mention of whether there needs to be changes in our gun laws. And that's what we want. That's what this resolution is asking for. And I'm sorry about that. I don't believe it's going to happen. That's just my opinion. Because the NRA has, uh, given more than $2.1 million to our senators and House of Representatives here in Texas. And, uh, whether you believe it or not, but the NRA has your governor, Abbott, in their, their back pocket. He's not, he's not going to, you know, he's not going to muddy the waters because his campaign, his campaign is being funded largely by the NRA. So is this going to happen? Is this, uh, uh, special session going to happen? I think not. And why do we have to ask for a, a special session? Why doesn't he take the initiative after May 24th to say, "We need to sit down and talk about this, but we can't let this happen anymore"? He hasn't done it. We have to make, we have to ask him. The citizens have to ask him to have a special session. Is that the type of person you want leading this, this state of Texas? I don't, I don't know that he even cares about Uvalde. It's, it's, it's a shame that he, that he, uh, portrays himself as the governor, the leader of this Texas, and, uh, we have to ask him to hold a special session. I hope it happens. I really do hope it happens. But even if it does, I don't think it's going to pass. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Loy. Uh, item sixteen, consider the approval of ordinance, amending chapter 13.16.025 of the code of ordinance, bulk purchases of water.
Okay, so we're in a drought and it's been several years since we were having to fill up tanks that people were bringing in from their homes out in the country because their wells have gone dry. But it started again. There's a group of people south of town, there's a group of people west of town that are having to share water. Um, I, they're, they're having to try to dig into the Nuasus River bottom to get water for their cattle. Um, and so we need to be able to provide water to these out-of-city residents. These wells are going dry temporarily until the rains start. Um, we have, this is a multifaceted, uh, problem. And so, uh, week or two ago, the Commissioners' Court passed a, a resolution to declare a drought disaster for the entire county. And that has enabled us to talk to TDM about getting some assistance so that we can set something up so we can start helping people with water. But in looking at that, we also looked at our water rates for, uh, bulk water. They haven't been raised in 10 years and they weren't covering our EAA rates, our fees. So this is a request to adjust our rates for bulk water for both in-city if somebody needs it or out-of-city limits so that we have that in place. And then the next step will be, um, which we'll probably come back to in the next council meeting, hopefully, um, how we're going to provide that water. We're currently waiting on some bids from four different companies. We heard from one today for a type of system that would be sort of like when you go to the gas pump, that you could go and you could pay or you could prepay and use a card, that type of thing, so that people could come up and fill up their tanks at their leisure, that people won't have to take off work to make, to make it here before the city closes and that sort of thing. But we're going to try and see if we can get TDM to help us pay for that. But we want to have our water rates set so that if we're able to do that, we can go ahead and program that equipment with the correct water rates that will cover our EAA fees.
I don't see any problems with this. Motion to approve item sixteen.
Second.
Sixteen. I have a motion from Chip King, seconded by Milwaukee. All those in favor? Aye. Item sixteen, consider extending the declaration of local state of disaster due to public health emergency and local emergencies. I think that's the same one that we've been passing every, every month.
Same one. It's a little teeny. Yeah. Motion to approve item sixteen.
I second. Motion made by Councilman King, seconded by myself. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Motion adjourned?
Motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.